I am going to call the order, the meeting to order for the Melican Middle, at the Elementary School, blah, 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 September 7th at 6:34 PM. So that's my first official time of year, so sorry I was a little off. The first order of business is audience sharing. Does anybody have anything to say? So just a reminder about, yep, come on up. I think there's a mic.
Yeah.
Yep, you can go sit right at the table there. So just a reminder about audience sharing. We limit it to about three minutes per person. And we're just a sounding board, so we will not engage in any conversation, but we will make note of everything you say. And we might be talking about it later on the agenda, or we will bring it up at another meeting to get back to you.
Sounds great.
So you can just say your name and address.
Yeah, so good evening. My name is Amanda Jabo. I live at 80 Little Pond Road. And I'm here this evening to bring attention to two items to the school committee. The first being the school calendar. So each year, I feel that it gets more and more unmanageable from both a time perspective and also a cost perspective. There are more and more days off each year. It's hard to find childcare on those days. There's nothing in the town that's run for families with two working parents. And so I really want to bring attention to that. And I have kind of two suggestions for the committee to consider as part of the discussions for the district calendar for next year. One is to work with the town to take elections out of the schools, so that we do not have to have all three of those days off that we're going to have off this year. We have plenty of other places in town for my, in my opinion, the Town Hall, the Senior Center, the library. There are a lot more people that are going to vote by mail because that eligibility has expanded. So I think the turnout will, you know, suffice that we can find other places in town to do this, rather than at one school, but yet closing all the schools or the entire district for that. The other recommendation or suggestion I have is the holidays. So I really appreciate that the district has put a lot of thought into outlining all the holidays for different cultures and traditions, religions, many of which I had never heard of before. So I really appreciate that. That being said, we still have some holidays that are given as school holidays. It just doesn't seem equitable. So, you know, the two coming up for the Jewish holidays, and then also I'm just thinking of Good Friday. So I'm a Christian, and I feel like we don't necessarily need to have that day off of school. It should just follow like any other cultural religious holiday. And the parents, if they need to pull their children out, it should be an excuse absence. But again, should not call off the entire district. And I think that would really help make the calendar more manageable. It would also help shorten our school year. We don't know how many school, the snow days are going to come. I just look at the calendar every year, and I wonder when we're going to be going to school till 4th of July. And it's just, it's just not sustainable, in my opinion. The other thing that I would like to bring attention to the committee tonight is gifted education for the elementary level especially. So I'm going to draw upon my own experience as a child in Ohio, where there were significant advancement, you know, grade acceleration, special classes available for gifted students, and that's just not here in Massachusetts. It's pretty disappointing to me as I'm finding that out with children of my own now, who are kind of in need of some of those services, that it's just something that just doesn't exist as a state. And so I really feel like if the district wants to live up to its mission statement to provide equitable opportunities for all learners, that includes both the students who need help, who are falling behind, which is there's definitely a need there, but then also that group of students who has advanced and need some opportunities in that space beyond, but kind of current differentiated learning model that's available. And so I would really ask the district to be more transparent in information that they have, or discussions that have been started around gifted education, especially at the younger levels, and to really be a trailblazer, be a leader. You know, make people, make us be the example that people want to see, and that make them want to come to this district was because they see that opportunity available. Happy to volunteer myself on a committee, or a study group, or anything to share my experience and my perspective on that as well.
Great.
Hopefully I stuck to three minutes.
You did. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Heather Simone, 47, Little Pond Road. And I'm going to echo some of the things that Amanda has already touched on. I also looked at the calendar this year and tried to figure out how to manage all of the days off. It's also very disruptive to my children. Going three days last week, and then getting them up to try to go three days this week at first and third grade, and trying to get them into a, into a routine has been very difficult. So I echo her sentiments on looking at polling places outside of the schools, as well as I respect the diversity and inclusion that we've tried to do with holidays. I did take a look at our surrounding towns. So Shrewsbury, Hudson, Grafton, I forgot the other town, all give the same list of holidays as excuse absences, but don't give Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah, and Good Friday off, right? They leave it to the parents to do that. And so I think when you look at the surrounding towns, you know, they're getting out of school at June 15th, June 16th, and now our children are now going till June 20th, or 24th, I can't remember, where they're essentially having off that Monday, and then going one or one and one and a half days the next week. There's no camps that are going to be that week. And so it just makes it very difficult to kind of manage that. The other thing I ask for consideration is from the start of the calendar. So I grew up in Pennsylvania, and I think the starting before Labor Day, we've, we've sort of shifted here in Massachusetts to do that. However, you know, we start on a Wednesday, and I've just never gotten the logic behind starting in the middle of the week, where Monday and Tuesday, it's what, just getting the kids prepared for school, I get, the teachers are coming back, but for me, I would ask for consideration to potentially even look to shift to a Monday or Tuesday start, which actually some of the surrounding towns do as well. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Anybody else in the audience? Okay. And we are going on to new business. School opening. So on Monday, August 29th, we welcome back the faculty and staff to the auditorium. And Greg is going to, Superintendent Margot is going to fill us in about that. And however you want.
So we have a lot of positive information to share about the opening of school. On Monday and Tuesday of last week, our teachers returned. And it was the first time in two years where we were able to gather as 10 schools, three districts, one community of learners. And it was nice to see faces and actually acknowledge our 10 schools. Over the summer, we've had a tremendously busy summer. I think we're the only sector where we stop on a day in June, do a lot of work behind the scenes in June and July and August, and open up in September. Behind the scenes, our custodians, our facilities crew, our technology teams are working to make sure our schools are prepared for our students, and they did an amazing job. So we have a few updates. And also, we do have programs that run during the summer. So our multilingual program and our extended school year program are running most of the summer, and we have faculty and staff who are engaged in that work. So there's no shortage of work. We welcome back students on August 31st. So we had a little over 1,690 students, pre-K through eight, return to our schools. Although our schools were shiny on August 30th, there's nothing better than to see our schools come alive with our faculty, staff, and students. So this evening, we have a few updates. So Marie Allen will give an update on our extended school year program. Rhoda will give an update on our multicultural program. And then Keith will talk about facilities and transportation and food services. And I will turn it over to Marie.
Okay. So this summer, our extended school year, better known as ESY, we welcomed pre-K to age 22 students at Algonquin, all in one building for the summer. And overall, it was a very successful summer. We, some students chose to mask, other students didn't, but we were all in. We didn't do any remote service. And thanks to everyone involved in putting the whole program together, were our custodians, our central office administration, transportation, technology, nursing, and of course, our staff. So there's a lot that goes into putting together the program. Having all the programming in one building allowed for us to combine our specialized resources, like our reading specialists, our physical therapy, our nursing staff, and the like, BCBAs. And that really makes it a more efficiently run program, because we can deliver many more services in one building. More school year staff taught this summer than the previous year, which was very helpful because it helps with the consistency and the familiarity of programming with our students. So we're hoping to attract more of our staff for next year. And to do that, we're looking at our programming again next year. We had five and seven week programs. We're looking at the days and the times in order to attract more of our staff, because the kids get a better experience when we have our own staff out working. Any questions? Yes?
Hi, Marie. Thanks so much for running such a successful program. It's great to hear that more of our staff was working with our students. And it actually surprised me, just knowing sort of the climate of how burnt out teachers were after last school year. So that's really promising. And I'm wondering what conversations you're having with those teachers who, who did choose to work the summer, about scheduling and sort of what drew them in? That way, you know, maybe it can be favorable for scheduling next summer.
There were many of the teachers that decided to run the summer program and have students in their programming. They did it because they missed it, and they really wanted to get to know the, some of the students that they were going to have for the next year. So I think that was a big draw. But there's a lot more work we need to do. I do think we need to take a look at the number of days and the length of the day, so that it will attract more teachers. And I think that was a lot of the feedback we got from our staff, that if it were looked at a little differently, they might consider choosing to come in for the summer. So that's the work that we have to do this year.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any legal stipulations about times and days for the summer?
No. No. It is, it's based on substantial regression and making sure that, that kids get what they need, and they, and they are not behind when they start the next school year. And it's also based, for our more severe population that requires it, there is a two-week window on each side that is required. There shouldn't be any more than a two-week gap from the end of the school year to the beginning of the school year. So we wouldn't touch that. That's not, we're not at all looking at that. We're looking at staying within guidelines, but still trying to attract more teachers.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
I just have a quick question, Marie, and thanks for the presentation about the curriculum. In the ESY program, is that curriculum mainly reinforcing and reviewing of the skills of the previous school year, or is it an extension and enrichment? Which one is it?
It is more reinforcing what was taught from the previous school year. And for some of our students in Castle, it is about moving things forward.
Well, I think that's, I mean, it's great. I think it's wonderful that we have this, because we always know, no matter what student, no matter what level, there's always some summer regression. And you know what, usually in a curriculum for any grade K through 12, it's always, you know, a review the first September of the skills from the previous school year. So I'm glad that we can keep this up and keep the momentum going for the students, and that they are keeping up with their skills and learning at the same time. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Great. The only thing I would say is that I think, as you know, the earlier, the better notifying parents of the change, because that's where I feel like we'll probably get the most comments and worried about, is because a lot of times the parents rely on that care for their, for their kids for the extra school year and stuff. So make sure we're very open and transparent with the parents that there's potential change for that too. It would be very nice.
And we are working with NSPAC as well, to have those discussions.
Excellent. Great. Thank you so much. Who's next?
All right, next we have Rhoda Webb, our Director of Multilingual Education and Equity.
I have a few images that I would like to share with you today about our summer program. So very briefly, what we decided to do for our summer program this year was look at the portrait of a graduate, and we decided to develop the skill of creative, critical and creative thinkers. And so our theme for this year was mystery. And so there you will see our three essential questions. What does it mean to know something was one of the questions. And we decided to develop the skill systematically with the children over two weeks. So in the first few days, the children made observations to understand a mystery, and they were able to look at the natural world around them, even at nature chips, and practiced using their senses to make objective observations. Then we moved on to the students engaging in a variety of mystery box activities to practice influence skills. And then they used these skills in a reading lesson using the mystery themed read aloud. They also looked at finding evidence. All mysteries need evidence in order to be solved, so they explored the science of fingerprinted and fingerprinting, sorry, and completed hands-on activities with footprints. And then they applied those skills to figuring out mystery poems. They also, in the second week, looked at solving mysteries in math, art, and science. And they participated also in mock archaeological digs using cookies and brownies, and then they worked cooperatively to put the artifacts back together. And the program ended with a variety of digital and interactive escape rooms for all levels, where they applied the skills learned over the two weeks. I would like to thank Alana Seer for housing us this year, and the custodians at Proctor School, Keith Lavoy and Linda McGrath, for, because we offered buses for the very first time this year. Megan Wickstead, coordinator of the program, Sandy Bunsick for developing the curriculum. And the students were amazing. They had a lot of fun. We also had teachers and ESPs who put a lot of work into making this happen. And this was a program that is funded out of Title III, which is for multilingual learners or English learners. And this is part of the summer program that we offer this year. It was a longer day, and we offered buses for the very first time. So we had families that were able to participate that have not been able to attend in the past. So thank you for letting me share tonight. Thank you so much.
John?
Rhoda, thank you for your presentation. How many students did you have this summer? Can you?
Yes, we had, so K through, sorry, rising grade one through eight. We had 38 Northborough students with a total of 67 all in on.
And how much of an increase was that from the previous years? Because now you had transportation. Did you say?
Different families were able to attend.
Okay.
So it was, more had registered than were able to attend. There were students that got sick.
And I like?
You know, things happened, and some students weren't able. We were expecting a few, many, several students more than, than those were able to come.
And I like the idea that, you know, you brought in the portrait of a graduate, which is also in our strategic plan, which should be something that's present every day into the curriculum, into the teaching, which you proved there was even during the summertime. And from what you showed, I like seeing that you were bringing some elements of STEM in, the science of technology, engineering, and math. And even with the mystery, I think those kids are going to be further ahead. Like, if my memory serves me correctly, in October, teachers are going to be doing mysteries, because it just fits into that month of October with Halloween and everything. So those kids are going to have a heads up. So thank you very much. And I, it was enjoyable to see the actual artifacts of the kids and the evidence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will you be able to share the experiences that you just shared with us with all of your families? That way, the families did not participate this year, they might say, hey, that looks really fun. We want to do that next year.
That's right. That's a great idea.
Yes.
So is there a reason why it was at Proctor and not also at the high school? Is it a space thing? Or would it make sense to have it in two years, all at one location? Because I know we did save.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. The high school is 350,000 square feet, and they are really crunched to get their cleaning done in time. So as the summer school moves out, the ESY program moves out, it doesn't give us enough time to clean the high school having the program there. So we're fortunate enough to be welcomed by Proctor School this year.
Great.
If they didn't have to clean the high school, it'd be a great idea.
Great. And yes?
No, I just want to compliment Rhoda and Marie. The planning for these programs actually begins in November, and is a, quite an endeavor. And they've done an outstanding job preparing for our students. And they are two departments where kids do not leave. So although many of our students end in June, students that they are responsible for continue their education over the summer months. And it is quite an effort to make sure that it's an outstanding program. So I just want to commend their teams and their leadership and their hard work.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And now on to.
Transportation.
Hard work, Mr. Lavoy, and facilities, transportation, and food services.
All right. Well, we'll start with transportation. So as we all know, last year, the district took on a new start time initiative. So last year was its first year, and kind of with the pandemic, presented a couple of different challenges, but we learned a lot from it. So like we introduced back in the spring, we did want to look closely at the Northborough buses, and went forward with a reconfiguration of the PM routes. So a lot of the AM routes are very similar to what we had last year, with some fine tuning in, some tweaking, but we did go with a new configuration, which created new routes for many of the drivers, many of the families, and many of the students. So considering that adjustment, and it being the fourth day of school, we have had a successful start. The vast majority of our routes are on time to school in the morning, and they are arriving within a nice window of time in the afternoon. And especially even after four days, we're pretty happy. We thought there would be many more issues that we were contending with. So we're off, we're off to a very good start. That doesn't mean that we're done. There's a lot of work to be done, a lot of analysis that's required, and that's something that we're embarking on now and will for the next couple of weeks. But before I go into some of the detail of it, I do want to thank the drivers and the staff at NRT. They were incredibly collaborative over the summer, reviewing the routes, test driving the routes, asking good questions, even having conversations with families in August about preferences and things of that nature. I got a few little anecdotes for that. So it was, it was a collaboration and a genuine community thing, because it does impact people in different ways. So a huge thank you to them. Obviously, the students for the change and the parents. Everyone has been very supportive and wonderful, and have been asking some very good questions. So the biggest thing that happened between last year and this year in the PM was the splitting of the Algonquin and Melican buses. If you recall from last year, all 17 Northborough buses would come here to Melican, pick up the students, travel across town, and then go do their routes. Now we've allocated nine buses here at Melican and eight at Algonquin that will service the entire town. So one of those dismissals is at 212 here, and I can report that Mrs. Callahan does an incredible job of getting them moving as soon as possible, so that they can be on time for the early tier of elementary. can be on time for the early tier of elementary school buses at Z and Proctor. So what we have is we have those eight, excuse me, nine Melican PM buses, four go to Proctor, four go to Z, and one goes to St. Bees. That will, that serviced that first tier of early dismissals. Conversely, the Algonquin buses, which dismissal is at 230, support and split to support Lincoln Street and Peaslee. So that was a, quite a large change and quite a large endeavor. And we are finding that things are working well, but there are a couple of routes, probably per school, that need some attention. And we are hearing that from the community and we'll be working on making those adjustments in the next couple of weeks. So, you know, really for the beginning, considering it's that much change, we are, we are off to a good start. So before I go into a couple other things, definitely wanted to open that up. Anyone had any questions about the new config and anything that you've heard or want clarification on?
Can I ask, what, what time are we getting the all clear? Everyone is home? What has that been?
Well, considering it is the fourth day, we are, we were on Friday, what was it, Greg?
4:30.
4:30. It hovered a little bit to 4:40 in some cases today. I believe it was a little bit later. I think we had a little straggler, not quite sure why. I'll find out tomorrow. But considering that's the fourth day of school, that's actually better than it was pre-COVID. So we're right in that window of time of what it's been in prior years. So that hasn't drastically improved or drastically gotten worse.
Okay, thanks.
I know you said that you've sort of heard from the community. So do you feel like the community is best to sort of, you know, if they have any issues, email is the best form to reach you?
Absolutely. We have a transportation request form and it's been busy. We've, we've serviced over 400 different requests. This is from, you know, all three districts. Most of them have been Northborough because of the change, obviously. And we've tried to get back to people as soon as we can with a resolution. Some are experiencing a difference, like the AM stop might be different than the PM stop because things had to be consolidated. And that did come from our report that we had done last year from Transpar. So a lot of that work incorporated and it's just changed. So a lot of it's like, why did you decide to do that? Well, we're able to gather all these kids and be in one stop. Okay, we'll make it work. Or, hey, listen, those kids don't, are at the high school now. Can we move the stop down two doors? If I get agreement, we make the move. So a lot of it's fine tuning that isn't different than any other year. But I am finding that the volume of it is there, certainly in Northborough because of the change and the PM.
Are you going to do more about buses next?
I might.
Or are you moving to food?
I don't know yet.
Otherwise, okay.
Keep going. Please do.
I just wanted to bring up bus safety.
Yes.
Just especially at the start of the school year. I know there have been some instances of, you know, all over of people, you know, running those stoplights or stop signs. So what is NRT? What are the drivers doing to ensure the safety of our students who are crossing the street?
Absolutely. So one thing that happens annually is that the drivers are brought together over the summer to go over a lot of things like bus stop safety, route safety, you know, even so far as engaging with the students and building relationships on the bus so that they'll anticipate behaviors and things like that. We also added cameras last year to the buses for the first time, and those have been instrumental. It allows the drivers really to focus and has been able to pick up things like license plates of, you know, cars that go by. So we have used it. Great partners with Northborough PD. If we do have an incident needs to be reported, they have done some good follow-up with us before. So I think, you know, in addition to kind of those summer trainings, we're meeting more routinely with NRT to talk about the experience and to make sure that we're, you know, saying, well, what are you hearing? Or what types of things are your drivers encountering so that we can be proactive versus reactive? And we've made, you know, had to make some phone calls and, you know, have some good conversations. So I would say that NRT has done a really nice job of making sure it's a priority. And I think definitely with a change like we've encountered in Northborough in the last couple of years, they need to reinforce some of those things. Last thing I'd add to that is we make sure that there's an open avenue of communications from the drivers to the schools through NRT to make sure that we are addressing anything that pops up as quickly as possible. So that's part of an ongoing effort that we're renewing every year.
So Keith, the only thing I would add is-
Please do.
The conversations that we have with students around bus safety, making sure when they get off the bus that they're aware, they're looking both ways. And our partnership with parents around making sure those messages are also communicated at home in terms of just their personal safety and being aware of their environment. And when crossing a road or getting off the bus, they shouldn't have their earplods in or be on their phone. They really need to pay attention. And then I'll just echo what Keith said. If a parent sees something that's concerning or alarming, support that to us and we'll make sure we address it as soon as possible.
The first question is along the roots of safety, with the reduced amount of buses going to the elementary schools in the afternoon, do all of our students fit on the buses?
Yes. Yes, they do. That's part of the data collection we are doing. We might be making some adjustments. There are some buses that are more crowded than others and maybe we can move a neighborhood from one to another to make that shift. But we really don't know that until we get into it for about 10 days or so to see what the routine's going to be. So yeah, there are some that are, but they're not over capacity.
Okay. And then what's the update on Where's My Kid app? Is that working?
Sometimes.
Okay.
I've heard, I've gotten mixed reviews. We don't manage or support the app. That's an app that NRT actually purchased and through their parent company manage. It always has a startup at the beginning of the year that requires some calibration. We were able to get them all our kids with the IDs, especially the incoming kindergartners, and people have been able to get their accounts going. We have had issues like if a bus will cross through a school zone, it'll then go off because it recognized on GPS that it was in the zone of a school.
Yeah.
So there's little tricks like that that I'm, we're reporting. There's an email. They've been very responsive trying to get those issues. So I do encourage families to, you know, put that into the transportation request form and we'll connect them with the parent company. But I can't see it, nor do I know how to manage it. That's done by NRT.
Okay, thanks.
I have three about safety. The first one is, is it a requirement or is it a recommendation for students to be wearing the seat belts on the bus?
They were removed due to the height of the seats being more protective than the seat belts themselves. So only in highly specialized situations are we using seat belts.
Okay. And the second thing, when you're talking about safety, when the bus comes to the school and all the students depart, and also at the end of the run, at the end of the day, do the bus drivers walk back to the end of the bus to make sure all kids are off? That type of-
They do, absolutely. And that's part of their all-clear. There is a beacon at the front and the back, and they have to make the touch point on both ends of the bus in order to clear that route. That's correct.
Okay. And the last one is a follow-up from several years ago. I know we were talking, and I think Kelly brought it up, working with the town officials. And that was the safety crosswalks at each of the schools. Are those in all operation? Have you checked those?
We've made improvements in places. I know we did have to make some improvements at Proctor last year and those were done. We weren't able to do any of the high-grade like solar, you know, lighting type systems at Proctor, but all the other ones do have the flash and lights that are programmed appropriately for the school, the updated school times that we had last year.
So they, those lights would be flashing before school and then for dismissal?
An hour, yes. An hour before and an hour after on either end of the day.
Okay.
As long as we don't get hit with a, daylight savings throws us off sometimes.
Oh, no, unfortunately. What about for the middle school when they have after-school programs? Does that still going?
Ms. Callahan, do you know, do we still have the lighting at, on Lincoln Street for PM dismissal at 4 o'clock?
I don't think it's working.
I don't think so. I don't believe so, Joan.
3:30.
It's just for, yeah, it just goes till 3:30 or so.
Just to 3:30.
Mm-hmm. That's a good suggestion.
All right. And I like to thank Kelly because I think she brought that up a couple years ago and really working with the town. And I see that we have the chairman of the select board here is working together with them. You bought those to be operational and I think some were added and updated.
Correct.
I know. I was driving by one. I was like, uh, it's not working. It's a little weird.
It's helpful.
It is. Very much so.
The doctor has none, nothing.
That's right. Proctor needed an upgrade.
Proctor's a unique situation because it is kind of on and off streets.
Correct. It's in the neighborhood.
But the main street still is used enough.
I think everyone, as soon as you brought that up, everyone agreed and we were able to mobilize some resources to get the basics done. I still think it could use an upgrade.
So I would just add that we also partner with the Safe Routes to School.
Yes.
And that's a resource from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They will help us evaluate safety. They'll sponsor our walk to school days, bike to school days, really partner with us on bus safety and commuter safety. So that's another partnership that we have.
In fact, Mary Ellen and I have a meeting with them tomorrow morning to talk about their latest programming and how we can collaborate with them. And I am also happy to report that all five schools in Northborough are partners with Safe Routes to School, which we did some work on last year. So we're all able to use their programming, which we're looking forward to doing.
That's great news. Thank you. So just quickly before you move on, the two things that I had, that I heard throughout the community was kind of what, there was a three-way seat for the high school kids, you know, big football players, you know, can't all fit in the seat. So I know that's something you're saying we're going to be addressing the next 10 days. So there was that. And then the only other thing I heard was that at some of the schools, on the second tier of the elementary school, they don't get picked up for at least half hour after the dismissal?
That's-
Because, I mean, I don't know, is that just because tier one runs slower?
No, that's, there are a couple of Algonquin buses that are running a little longer than anticipated. But we have been able to improve that over last year, especially at Peaslee. We had a couple buses that were running, running super late. But that's been dialed down. I don't believe, I think there's, we also have, I know what you're talking about. We had a driver resign the week before school started.
So there was no-
That has created an impact. And I just connected with Principal Seer about that. That, that bus was late today because it's a covered driver from another district. We were whole one week prior and we were the only district in the area that had all of its drivers, all of its bus routes covered with their driver. A lot of communities are struggling with that. So we felt great. And then literally a week before school stopped, we, we lost a driver to resignation and that has had to trickle down, that being one.
So that's definitely going to be improved and-
Yeah. And I think I would just add that it's day four.
I agree.
I think our bus drivers are often the first person a student sees in the morning and the last student, you know, the last person they'll see when the student exits school day. And I think our bus drivers pride themselves on the relationships with students, learning their routes and keeping kids safe. It takes about two weeks for bus drivers to get comfortable with their routes and to provide feedback and suggestions around how to improve the routes and make them more safe. So as we see that happen over the next couple of weeks, we will gain time just from our bus drivers knowing students and knowing their routes better.
I mean, one thing I did hear, because my kids don't take the bus, but was how great the bus drivers really are and how the parents were actually feeling bad for the bus drivers because of the combined stops, the extra things. And they were feeling the stress of the bus driver. Like they were like, oh, we feel horrible. And, you know, and the kids being the boss and they get, you know, having to wait a half hour before a bus comes and then they're anxious and they're tired. And then somebody was like, what about the kindergartners? Do they have to go to the bathroom? I'm saying, I don't know. That's another thing to worry about. So, but I do have to say that I have heard great things about the bus drivers and they are, they are doing their best and-
I do want to thank the, yeah, no problem at all. I do want to thank the principals. Some of them have really taken individualized, you know, students with their situations and tried to work the best remedies possible. So there's been a lot of work on behalf of the kids to make sure the start of the end of the day goes as smooth as possible. And hopefully we'll see that iron out in the next couple of weeks.
Great. And do we want to move on to food services?
We can if you'd like.
Sure.
All right. So also, a thing that occurred over the summer is that the Commonwealth supported free school lunch for all students for one more school year. I highlight that and emphasize that because I hope it will continue infinitely. Because it does have a significant impact on our ability to focus on the meals that we provide and the students in front of us versus worrying about where the collection of money is going, going to come from. So that has obviously been huge. One thing that we've had to adapt to is during the pandemic, we did not use our point-of-sale system. There was no requirement for that. We simply counted the number of meals that were served. We didn't have to individualize that for students. Now we do. That's one of the requirements of the new free meals package. And we are putting our point-of-sale systems back in place. With that's come a little bit, you know, kind of after you had something unplugged for two and a half years, plugging it back in doesn't always go well. So we have been having a few bumps there and trying to get ironed out. So certainly a thank you to Kyle Parson, his team for being flexible, and our IT team as well for trying to tighten that up. And we made gains today. So we're hoping that gets ironed out. But for the student experience, the difference is they need to know their ID number when they go up. And for some, that's not something they haven't had to do for three years. So we had a little bit of practice with that in the spring, varying degrees between the schools, but we are requiring that for the start of the school year to account for every kid that goes through the line. And then we will be working on the accountability of that through, whether it's through the federal program or the state program to get the reimbursement. So we are thrilled. Becky's thrilled. We definitely have a lot to be thankful for, but we are, you know, getting used to kind of a new way of operating. The other thing that we'll be doing that people won't see is we are going to be putting in place a new point-of-sale system at the end of October, early November. So that's really going to help with all the glitches we're seeing now and the old equipment. We do have new equipment that's going to be used. That's going to be part of a web-based system. And we're really looking forward to that launch. It won't have anything to do with the student experience. That'll be the same. But the hope is that on the backend, our accountability will be cleaner and we'll be able to focus on the things that we want to do moving forward. So we are excited about that. But certainly the CAF managers, the schools, the principals have all done a lot about communicating these changes and making sure that the kids are being taken care of. So the lines are a little slow to start the year, but that's always the case. But we're hoping to get into a groove sooner rather than later.
I would just applaud the governor and the legislative bodies because federal government took that away from us. And the last time we met in the spring-
Correct.
We did not know what the state of Massachusetts was going to do. So applaud to our legislators and our governor for signing that into a bill. When you talk about the free meals, is that just lunch or is it lunch and breakfast? And then another question, do we still have something like a grab and go? I know we did at the high school. Do we have it here for the middle school students?
We haven't ironed that. Oh, so I'll go back to the first. So lunch, lunch is free for all students at all five schools. Lunch is, breakfast is being served at Melican or will be served at Melican and Proctor as soon as we can get things, things up and running. Grab and go is interesting. We have to still have all the meal components and we got to collect their PIN number. So that's not just grab and go. So we've had to adjust that. And I know we're working on how that is going to work efficiently. I don't believe that's begun yet. I've been too busy with the buses. So I don't think that started officially yet, but it will shortly.
And it would be nice to get an update, maybe within a couple of months, you know, just to see the numbers and how that's working out. I think that's redat to have. And I'm glad that we're offering it to all the students because students come into the school and they have a growling tummy and it's not going to be-
Are they available to learn? Probably not. It's going to suffer. That's correct.
Thank you very much.
This has certainly helped and we look forward to at least one more year.
And give our thanks to the food directors, too.
Certainly will. We were waiting all summer till late July, which made August interesting. So.
Yeah, just, I would just add two points. One, I think, is that the advocacy for this to continue isn't over, right? Like just affirming that they just did this for 10 months. And I think that we have a lot of work to do, not only as Northborough community, but just to our legislatures here in Mass. Thank you for approving for a year, but let's push this thing forward and make it permanent. And I guess I have a question that's kind of associated with Jones. Grab and go, my understanding is that all meals need to be consumed on campus.
They, they do. So it would be in the morning, a student could grab a complete meal and they're able to either eat it in the CAF at that moment, or they can have it in their locker. And we had a lot of kids last year, you know, grazing over the course of the day. But yes, not at the end of the day.
Right.
Only in the morning.
Leaving the campus with a meal otherwise. Yeah, okay. But are they allowed to eat in classrooms?
Not presently. I think that's kind of being tightened up a little bit. I mean, as needed, certainly, but not exclusively, no.
I just think as it ties into the transportation mechanisms and the delivery of students to the schools serving breakfast on time and accessibility should be considered as paramount. And if the students aren't arriving with enough time to eat prior to going to their classrooms, that there be some thought considered to allow them to bring the meal.
Yeah, and accommodations would be made, certainly.
Is it? Great. Thank you.
No, I'll just add a thank you to Keith for his hard work around transportation. Takes a lot of organization. And again, his work starts, you know, early in academic- And again, his work starts, you know, early in the academic year. And also Linda McGrath has been also behind the scenes and making sure that we're getting back to parents, making sure that families have what they need and the routes are scheduled correctly. And our food services staff, Kyle Parson and cafeteria folks have done a great job preparing and welcoming our students. And just like bus drivers, our CAF staff and our custodians are key players in the work that we do educating our students. And they really do care and have a positive impact on the life of a student in our system.
So next on the list is legislative update. There's none at this time unless anything popped up.
No, I was just going to echo Bryce had said around. There's some, some movement around advocating for universal free meals at the federal level and engaging in that conversation and discussion. So as we advocate as a committee and as a community, I think universal free meals is, for me, a high priority. And I know it is for the committee as well.
Next on the list and agenda is the subcommittee liaison assignments. I hope everybody had a chance to review and maybe volunteer for some things. We set the, in the June meeting, we set the capital planning, collective bargaining, operations and the policy. I just want to double check because we kind of did it at the last minute, I think. Everybody still set with those, secure with those things? Okay. And then the liaisons to the other groups. My question to Superintendent Martino is, well, two votes. One, the inactive things, do we need to name anybody on the inactive ones? And then two, is there a way that we can either hide the inactive ones or like move them down the list? I think it's probably like alphabetical or something.
Yeah, we can definitely.
Just so then that way it kind of isn't as overwhelming. I know Lauren did this a few years ago. She reworked the whole thing, and it's like so great. But that would be my suggestion about.
No, we can definitely organize the inactive committees and groups so it's on a different table. But I think it is important to assign, just in case a committee does move into inactive state.
So for example, the curriculum review, do we need two people on it? Or can we just take off Mr. Lebel?
We, we should have two people on the curriculum review. That's been something we've, I think, pre-pandemic had up and running and something that we hope to start back up again now that we're out of the pandemic.
Is there anybody who would be interested in being on that one?
I'll do that one.
Would you do? Okay, so we're going to put Mrs. Tyler Ferry on the curriculum review. Lauren, are you good for the equity and the diversity still?
I am. So the only change in that is that I was a liaison to the Northboro DEI committee as well as a member last year. This year I am not a member of that committee because we decided, we recommended to the Board of Selectmen that a school committee member was not necessary. So I'm happy to still be a liaison however.
Yeah, great. Joan, are you good with any other stuff?
Yes, I am.
I'm great to be on the kindergarten one. That's good. The health and wellness. Aaron. The joint services for the library. I mean, it's inactive anyways. I mean, I, if you want, we can just put like the chair on for now, you know, just so I'll be on it. And then I don't, I don't know what that is. Is that library services?
I don't think that has been in.
Library, like the.
I don't think that has been an active committee for a few years.
So that might be something that's even like a.
We can reach out to the library trustee and see. And Joan, you might have some history about it as well.
Yeah, that used to be with the Library Board of Trustees. So it would be the superintendent and the school committee member going and meeting and meeting with the libraries, hauled up with the librarians.
Because is this the school librarians or you're talking about the town librarians?
The town librarians.
Okay.
So if there were any special projects that we heard from the principals, there would be, you know, like any units of study or something like that, or the superintendent would know what it was. We would give them a heads up about what was going to be taking place. And sometimes we do some joint things together back and forth.
Okay.
And we used to be the Library Board of Trustees.
I'm looking at one of our audience members who was on it, so.
I've never heard of it before.
Yeah, okay. The World Language Study Group. I don't know if that's been, thinking about circling that back. I know we talked about languages for the high school level. I don't know if we're going to do that. But Joan, would you want to stay on that if it does?
Yes.
NSAC, I am on it. I, I love being on it. I love being part of it. I am, my work schedule has changed a little bit right now. I'm not sure if it's going to lighten up at all, but I'm not going to be able to attend many of the meetings during the daytime. But if somebody else, I don't know if somebody else has an interest of wanting to.
I'd love to do it, but the daytime stuff.
The daytime stuff is tough.
I'm not going to be able to, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we could talk about even putting both of us on it. And then like if there's a nighttime thing and we can kind of maybe.
That's, that's totally fair.
Pair it up so then that way we can kind of like transition to and see.
Be way into that.
Do you want to do that?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll add Bryce to that. And then that way we can coordinate with us and see how that goes. The music group, it's inactive. Lauren, you love music, so I'm thinking you want to stay on that. Superintendent Advisory Committee, I'm on it and Aaron's on it. Same thing, I have to go, I'm now working every other Friday. So depending on when the meetings fall, it'll be, but at least there's, both of us are there. So we can handle that. The selectmen.
It's you.
It's the chair. That's what I was thinking. All right, so we'll change me to that. The senior citizens.
Yeah, that's fine.
Did you do anything really with it? Is there anything that they, should we change that to inactive? Or does it, I don't know.
I think the senior center was obviously impacted significantly by COVID-19. So I think as their programming starts to return to normal, I think it'll be important.
Yeah, we used to meet in the parking lot, bring our chairs and meet in the parking lot.
During COVID.
Yeah, during COVID. So, I mean, it's a good group to connect and see how the, you know, the students, maybe at the middle school, it's more important, I think, for the high school. They can offer technology services or something or keyboarding techniques. So, but it's just that, you know, and also if there's any middle school plays that we have, is the seniors always are invited to come. And I just make sure that they're aware of it to address rehearsals, something like that.
Solar feasibility is myself and Ms. Cress. I think I asked it last year, too. Does it make sense to have her name listed on the thing even though she's not? I mean, she can still be on the thing without being, I just feel like these are kind of like the school committee names, members.
I think if we reach out to Ms. Cress and ask if she still has an interest in continuing, then we probably could change the role to community member and still have her serve.
And still have her serve.
And add another school committee member to that support group.
I think it makes sense to have that. So would somebody else like to join in with the solar thing? We had a couple of meetings last year, and they were in the planning phase of scoping out some things for this year. Don't all jump at one.
I'd be happy to, yeah.
You have a lot of.
That's fine. I can do it. I mean, it all depends on the meeting times.
Yeah.
And during the day a lot, so. It doesn't make sense for me to be on it. That's the only thing. Keith, is that true typically during the day?
We tried to switch it up.
I feel like we did on.
Usually.
Yeah.
Later afternoon.
Later afternoon, but not evening.
Early evening, I feel like what it was last.
Four thirty, five.
Four thirty, yeah. It's not too bad then.
It's up to you.
And again, I feel like it's.
Solar feasibility.
Solar feasibility. And again, I feel like it's something that two don't necessarily have to be present.
I mean, you feel like that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll take it. Sure.
So Aaron will be on that. Start time working group, it's inactive.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we have talked about maybe having just sort of like one final meeting, just to discuss how start time change went.
It makes sense for you just to stick to that, I guess, for that purpose. And if it does pick up and needs to be changed, we can always adjust it. So building new grounds is the entire committee. I'm not sure if we're talking about that later, but I think we will be talking about it at some point about doing that. Basically, we say the entire committee because we like to do a tour of the schools. We haven't done it the last one or two years, I feel like.
Few years.
Because of the circumstances that we are in. But I really want to get on it this year and check out some of the schools. So that's why the whole committee is listed for that. Mentoring to new members, it says inactive. Joan, I don't know if you want to stick with it. I mean, we do have a new member.
Well, I think we have a new member, and he excelled. I know, he's the union chair. I loaded him up with documents because it was the superintendent's evaluation.
Continuing the mentorship.
Checking how he's doing on his job and everything, this new job. So I mean, he excelled in it, and, you know, I gave him all the documents and talked about the new school orientation. So I don't, you know, I think he's doing a great job, so.
And then payroll and warrants is myself. And then I think we were going to add Bryce to that list also. And that is about it.
So it looks like there's already a list started for inactive at the bottom.
The former inactive, so committees, yeah. It looks like those can probably bump down to the, yeah. Green catch. Thank you all so much. Approval of grants and donations. So we have two grants. One is a donation of $500 to the Z School for purchasing a walkie-talkie from Robert Berger. And the second is Metro West Health Foundation Grant, in-person licensed clinician hours for Northboro schools, number 46-21, the first installment for the amount of $25,000. Do we have any motions?
Do you want them together or separate?
I think we could do them together. I don't know if you.
Okay, so I move that we accept with gratitude and thanks the following grants and donations. The first one is donation of $500 to Z School for the purchase of a walkie-talkie from Robert Berger. The second one is the Metro West Health Foundation Grant, in-person licensed clinician hours for Northboro schools, number 46-21, first installment in the amount of $25,000.
Bryce, what second? Any discussion?
I had a question on the second one. It said the first installment in the amount of 25. Is there a second installment or is there going to be subsequent more than just one and two?
Many, many installments.
There will be four installments. How many? Four. Four. And each of them 25?
It's spread out over two years, Mary Ellen, is that correct? The Metro West Health Grant, that's a two-year grant?
Two-year grant, yes.
This is part of the one that was, we talked about in May, the end of May. We had the presentation and they briefed about, I think it was, is it total 125, is it?
100.
Just 100, yes. So they'll all be 25.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question about like, so what does that mean for clinical hours available? And that's Northboro and Southboro or just Northboro?
This is just for Northboro.
Okay.
And Mary Ellen probably has more details on what the hours, what the clinical hours actually are comprised of.
I'm just wondering, so per installment, how many clinical hours is the clinician available for?
20 hours a week.
20 hours a week.
I'm sorry, do you mind standing up for the microphone? I just, I know, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm just thinking of the audience at home. They probably are not hearing any of it.
The voice from beyond.
You don't have as booming of a voice as Bryce or myself, so.
The folks at home hear about how many hours this gets per week of.
Sure. So what we noticed last year, we have contract with Family Success Partnership, which provide wraparound services for our families and our students. And the, there was more of a request for one-on-one consultation for a clinician and the students. So with that, we just, we needed to expand what we had available for our students. So the grant will entail 20 hours a week of services from licensed clinicians through Family Success Partnership for one-on-one consultation with students. It will include additionally staff consultation as needed and eight hours of professional development throughout the year for our staff.
Thank you, yeah.
You're welcome.
Is this something that, because it's a two-year grant, is this something that we would then want to consider absorbing into our operational budget to something to carry on? Or do you think that this is something that two years will catch us up to the need of where we need to be at?
I think mental health is going to be with us. And the mental health crisis that we're in is going to be with us for a while. It's not something that's going to go away in two years. So this is a pilot program to see if this is going to supplement what we already have in the schools and in the town and where we can build there.
So something to keep in mind also for our budgets, it sounds like, and other grants maybe possibly come up.
And our intention is to provide the committee with, you know, updates throughout the year of how the program is working. And I just want to thank Mary Ellen and Dr. Jennifer Ellipton-O'Connor for pursuing this grant and doing all of the work to have this opportunity for our community and our families. It's part of the work that we need to do in terms of making sure we have healthy and balanced learners and a healthy and balanced community. So thank you.
I'd like to also say that Kristen Black, the Board of Health Agent, and Isabella Caruso, who is the Northboro Board of Health Epidemiologist, also collaborated on this grant with us because they saw the need was in, that we had this need in Northboro.
I think that's a wonderful example of the town working together with schools in a joint here for the betterment of the students and the staff. And the hours I know that you put into doing the writing of the grant is immeasurable. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Kelly?
I have one question on the purchase of the walkie-talkie. Is that for the principal or how did the need arise for that at Z School?
Want me to take that?
Sure.
So the Z School converted to a new digital radio last year. We had an aging system there that needed to be refurbished. So we went ahead and were able to purchase some new radios. But we found the need that there was, there was need for additional ones. So in order to do that, the Burgers were kind enough to donate that money, and we were able to integrate that into the already existing system over the course of the summer. And we put a bow on it and put it on a support service staff's desk for when they returned on August 29.
Very nice. And just to follow up, when the, how would your staff go out with the students for recess? Do they have walkie-talkies with them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table. No further discussion. In favor, it is unanimous. Thank you so much. And again, we want to thank Mr. Berger. And we will thank Metro West Health Foundation for its generous donations.
Kelly, one follow up. Do we send through the chair, does the chair send or through the office a letter of thanks to Mr. Robert Berger?
Yes, we typically send a thank you through the central office on behalf of the school committee and the district whenever we receive a gift. So we will do that with these two donations as well.
Okay, thank you.
The next is superintendent's report to the committee. First up is the principal's report. We have all of our principals in attendance for tonight's meeting. I would ask you to come up and have a seat unless there's a specific order. I know.
Can I organize? So why don't we have the elementary principals come up first? And then we'll have Michelle Carb and Jennifer Callahan.
I try, I mean.
Share their remarks, but before they come up, I just want to acknowledge the hard work and effort of our building principals launching a school year is a tremendous amount of work. It takes attention to detail, takes a lot of time and effort and they've done an amazing job. And our schools are, were ready for students for a lot of reasons, but primarily because of all the hard work and effort our principals put into making sure that every detail was attended to. So I just want to thank them publicly. So thank you. And I'd also like to welcome Alana, the newest member of our Northborough Elementary team, and that is John Bell. So John Bell is the principal of Z School and he has hit the ground running. Although this is not his first principalship, it is his first introduction to our district. And in a very brief time, he's already made his mark and has been a great addition to our team. So we're very fortunate and we are excited to see his work move forward. So welcome, John, and you welcome principals. And I'd like to just end before they give their updates. Is it the real work that happens in our district is at our schools with our principals and our teachers and our students? So this is truly the highlight, no offense Keith, in terms of your transportation updates. Very excited to hear the great work that is happening in our schools and the opening that took place over the past two days.
I'll go first. That's what you guys told me earlier, so I will go first. At Z School, we've had a fun and exciting start to the school year. The students are definitely getting comfortable with their new teachers. And me being new, I'm getting to know the students and the staff. I spent a lot of time in classrooms and in the lunchroom and at recess doing those things, just trying to get to know the kids and the staff. I want to say thank you to our awesome custodians Kevin Canaro and Nicole Rocha. The building looked sparkly, brand new when the kids showed up on the first day, which was awesome. The staff made lots of comments about how beautiful it looked. And also the front of the building had been landscaped and so it just was a nice way to kind of start the year on the right foot. We're actually going to do a Z School spruce up day next Friday, the 16th, where we're going to have each class go outside and have a different area that they're responsible for picking up. So the front looks great. We're going to work around the back and some other areas to clean it up some, just to get on top of some of the things that need to be done. So we're excited about that. I want to say thank you also to the teachers and the staff for helping start the year. Me being new, I don't know a lot of the ins and outs and I was just able to trust that they knew all the logistics of how kids get off the bus and, you know, go to lunch and all those things. And the first couple of days have been really smooth. You know, I heard all about buses and all that, but it really was a good couple of days for us. So I thank you to all of them for their hard work to make sure all those things happen. On Friday, we had our first community event as a school where we brought everybody together in the cafeteria. I let them get to know me as a principal a little bit there because I'm new and I want to make sure they know who I am and what I do. And then we just had some fun. I wrote a book to them and we did a rock, paper, scissors tournament as a school. It was a quick little thing, but it was fun just to get the kids and the staff together, having fun together, which I know because of COVID, the last couple of years wasn't always possible. So it was neat to kind of get back to some of those great things that happen in schools. And then my goals as a new principal, the first couple of weeks coming up is just learning kids' names. I'm, I'm about 30% right now. My brain's on overload a little bit, but I'm working on it. And then just being in the classrooms around the school, like I said, getting to know the resources that we have as a district and the programs and how they all function within the school. I've been a principal before, but every school does, every district does things a little differently. So I'm learning those things and I'm doing a lot of listening right now, getting to know, you know, listening to the kids, listening to the staff and listening to the families just so I can get a feel for where we are as a school. But I'm excited to be here, so thank you for having me.
Jennifer Wright, Lincoln Street School. So we're off to a great start. I echo John's sentiments for thanking our staff and our custodial staff for preparing for the start of the school year. A few bumps in the road to start, but four days in, I'd say it's going much better already. So we welcome staff back on August 29th and 30th for PD. Thank you to our amazing Lincoln Street School PTO for treating us to a stock staff room to start the year as well as a special treat from the Yulman's Ice Cream Truck. Set the tone for the year, so everyone was happy. Lincoln Street School was a busy, it was a busy time for me this summer. We had a lot of hiring that happened over the summer. So I'd like to formally welcome the following staff to Lincoln Street School. Jaffe Stone, grade two, Catherine Dale, grade four, Kate Kulissis, grade five, Stacy Bond, behavior specialist, Terry Hamla, special education teacher, Kaitlyn Day, ESP, Michelle Ramirez, ESP, and Jennifer Persons to our office staff. So far, the students are doing really well. They're settling in. The students and staff have been working to establish new routines and to foster relationships with one another. And it's been rewarding to see both new and old faces back at Lincoln Street School so far. Today, our fifth grade students participated in in-school band demonstration where they learned about joining the school band and the different instruments available to them for lessons. Later this month, this month, we're excited to participate in the upcoming Apple Fest Parade on September 18th. And we look forward to welcoming the families to our open house on Thursday, September 22nd from 6:30 to 8:00. Our PTO is also busy right now, planning for our back-to-school picnic that will be coming up later on this month at Lincoln Street.
All right, I'll go next. So Alana Seer for the Proctor School. And we had a really great start to the school year as well. Very positive and energetic vibe with the staff returning on that Monday, followed by the students on Wednesday. And I think what was really just so nice to see was the sense of normalcy, that students were so happy to be back together. I mean, simple things like eating in the cafeteria, tables together and the laughter and then joking around with each other, things that we really missed during the pandemic were just so nice to see with our students. Our PTO welcomed us back as well with a beautiful luncheon, gift cards for our staff to purchase, you know, school supplies through Amazon, anything that they were missing, last-minute items. And it's a true, you know, testament to our families and their support of our schools. And we thank them for the generosity, the PTO and our families for supporting that. You know, like my colleagues have said, the focus of the first several weeks is on building relationships, getting to know one another, forming our new classroom in our school communities. Teachers have spent a lot of time working towards that and setting up structures in order for students to get that, you know, have that time to get to know one another. And in our staff meeting, we really talked about the personal story of our students and getting to know our students on deeper levels to better understand them, their backgrounds, where they come from, so that we can best work with them and provide them with a really excellent school experience every day. Our building looks amazing. I can't thank our two custodians enough, Pan Banks and Corey Farley. They went above and beyond this summer and really turned the building inside out, upside down in a good way. And so one addition that we had to the normal cleaning was our building was power washed. And I don't know if you can get excited about power washing, but we certainly did. With the before and after pictures, it just, and staff didn't know. And when they came back, they all commented on how just bright the outside of the building looked in addition to the landscaping. So it just really set a nice tone for welcoming everybody back. So I want to thank them for their hard work. And as we continue to move forward, we have a lot of celebrations to look forward to. We have our welcome back celebration that's coming up in about a week. Our open house, we're looking forward to opening the doors, welcoming our families back in. We have some fun activities planned for that, for the families and the students as they come back in. And then with our PTO, just working to set up really good enriching experiences that complement our curriculum units, so bringing in authors. We have science events planned. So that's a lot of the behind the scenes work that we're really eager to bring back into the schools that we haven't been able to do. So we're off to a great start at Proctor.
So we also had a great opening at the Peaslee School. Our students and staff were excited to get the year started. I'd like to thank the staff for all their preparation that went into kicking off the school year. I'd also like to thank our Peaslee PTO as well for our delicious luncheon and for sprucing up the grounds before school opened. And it looks really neat and clean and welcoming, so thank you to them. There's a lot to celebrate at the Peaslee School. The Peaslee School opened in 1962, so if my math is correct, it's our 60th birthday. And so we will be celebrating and throwing a big 60s party this year, among other things. More details on that to follow. All of our teachers returned, but we did add a couple of aides and then a new custodian to our team. So in that note, I'd like to thank our current custodian, Justin Girard, and our newest custodian, Barbara Conca, for all of the hard work, along with Bud Richardson's for getting our building spanking clean for the school year to start. I'd also like to shout out to my administrative assistant, Kristen Ferrante. We have welcomed 22 new students to Peaslee. That's in addition to our kindergarten, our kindergarteners. And she really helped us with the scheduling of that and getting that all complete during those first couple of weeks back to school in August. This year, we as a Peaslee staff will be focusing on team building, broadening our skills as leaders. But we'd like to also extend that to our students as well. So opportunities for including them in the leadership in new and different ways will be a focus for us at Peaslee.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'd like to thank all of you for, and I hope you had a wonderful summer, first of all. I hope it was relaxing. You enjoyed it with your family and your friends. But I like to say that, you know, the K to five schools, along with the middle school, are such a jewel of our community. They always have been. I think all of us here have had students in the schools in, you know, past, present, and in the future. And you have done an outstanding job. I mean, any comments that I have ever heard is just very rewarding and makes me feel really, really good because what you're doing is just enriching our community and such a community of learners. Everything that you talked about, the PTO is helping out, the staff. And I mean, we have, I don't have to ask the question, do you, are you lacking in any teachers? Are you lacking in any staff? But I think from what I heard, you have, you have that and you're so thankful for what you have. And everybody is, and I think the kids feel very welcomed at the same time. I've heard some comments, I guess I'm going to give this to John, being the newbie on the block here, that I've heard wonderful things about your visibility, from what you said, even being outside at recess and everything, getting to know the kids and doing the paper scissors, whatever that is. I guess I'd like to say to you, if you know 30% of the students, you can give us an update, maybe in January. It'll probably be in a month.
I better read 100 by then, yeah.
30% in four days, that's pretty good.
And when will be, just for the parents that are watching in the audience here and on the video, when will your open houses be? I don't know if you call it curriculum nights, when will those be?
September 22nd.
What?
September 22nd.
September 22nd.
From 3:30 to 8 o'clock. For all of our schools.
All the schools, same night. Okay, that's really important to know. So congratulations and have a good night then and have a good year going forward. Thank you very much.
And then I just wanted to say about Principal Bell, about the community day that you did. Are you planning on doing that monthly?
Yeah, so we'll do those.
And other principals, are you planning on maybe doing a quarterly, trying it out? And I happen to know the student who won the rock, paper, scissors and he was thrilled by it and they absolutely loved everything about it and it was a fun experience.
So we're going to plan to do a monthly. We're going to recognize kids and staff at it and we just have some fun as a school also. Try to keep them short and sweet, but also I think it's important to bring the community together to do things as a school. So I know I've already talked in our principal group about it a little bit too. I'm still taking more than I'm giving right now, but we'll get there, so.
That's great.
And we currently do an, we call it an all-school meeting where we meet monthly. We did it virtually all last year and then a little bit of a hybrid. Same thing, you know, we keep it, try to keep it as short and sweet, but a way to come together and celebrate learning and then other school-wide activities. We do integrate our values, our core values each month and so that helps with building that as part of our strategic plan.
We're starting with DOT Day this September 15th. So we're doing partnering with our new librarian and doing something with that school-wide that we're going to use our library class and integrate some technology into. So I think that's, you know, we've all talked about is now that we can bring these events back to our buildings and have these all-school meetings and connect them to other events that we're doing, it's really exciting to bring that community spirit back. So I definitely think in all of our buildings, we're going to be building those opportunities back in. If nobody else has anything else to say. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. You are welcome to stay for the middle school to come up, but I know some schedules, you have to leave your office if you need to. Thank you so much.
So for a middle school update, like the elementary school, summer was very busy. We worked most of the summer and one of our admin assistants works all summer. And she did a nice job getting all students' schedules ready. We are trying a bit of a new schedule this year that involves students moving and mixing up more than we've been able to do the past couple of years. And we are still making some changes as kids settle in. But I have to shout out to Nicole DeAngelis, who has worked tirelessly to make sure kids had what they needed when they came in and that staff also had their schedules and their supplies when they came in. I also want to thank Bud Richardson, facilities manager, and our custodians, Jose Baez, John Peruzzi, and Dave Anastas. They were able to get the building clean. They were also able to do some maintenance that they haven't been able to do the last couple of years because of our focus on COVID mitigation and things like that. So our outside pillars were painted, a lot of our outside doors were painted, several classrooms were painted. So they have a schedule too for when they are in, working on the weekends, when outside groups are in over the next several months. They will continue to chip away at some of that and the building looks really great. We are 51 years old, so I think that it's amazing what some paint will do and some wax. So we're really thankful for all the hard work the custodians have done all summer as well. One of the other things our administrative assistant did is welcome 38 students. So we got schedules ready for them. We also had about 38 withdraw, so there's been kind of some moving and we've been able to manage that well also. Like the elementary schools, our start was very positive. Students were excited, staff was excited. And I think being able to start the year, not having to wear masks makes a huge difference. Just being able to see emotions on people's faces. Some of the students, I think that I don't recognize because they've been covered up for so long and they grow so much in the time that they're here, it's just really nice to see everybody, hear everybody. We are in the process of working on routines and procedures like everybody else while also making connections with students and with families. Our team leaders organized a welcome walk, which they did last year as well. And there are just some encouraging signs around and teachers were invited to take students out on walks. Those signs are still up, which is nice. Our tech staff was able to distribute Chromebooks to all students. That's almost 590 students. They're all in hands, passwords reset if they needed to. So that's pretty exciting. Sixth graders got theirs today. So we're able to get students into Canvas and getting going on their academics where a lot of our academics are. A lot of the work is posted in Canvas, so that's really exciting. So I'd like to thank Jen Tracy. She's been instrumental in keeping things moving with technology here. She's just been fabulous and very helpful to us and to the teachers. Our teachers are also excited about a sense of normalcy and are already planning some field trips that connect with units of study this year. We've been a bit restricted over the past couple of years because of COVID, but there's a lot of excitement around that and around some other learning experiences, including having speakers in. So things are moving along. We also have our open house the week after the elementaries, so on September 29th. Our open house for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade families is from 6:00 to 8:00 on the 29th. And more details will come out. Our open house is run a little bit differently. Our parents follow their children's schedule, so they have time with each teacher and they get to sort of rotate and see what that feels like. So we're looking forward to that as well. And we do have a lot going on, so I'll turn things over to Assistant Principal Callahan.
Thank you, Mrs. Carb. So just to echo what Mrs. Carb just mentioned, it was a great opening. The kids popped off the bus or out of their families' cars and we got them right into routines right away. It was a really nice opening where the teachers were patient and we walked children to their spots, especially those sixth graders who are really still transitioning from the fifth grade. grade, so they know where the safety line is for the fire drills and how to get to lunch and how the lunch process works. So we've really taken our time with that. The food service director has been really great with the kids and giving them their code because that's new. We really haven't had to do that for the point of sale. So we, today, even today, on day four, the line was probably five or six minutes quicker than it was even on Friday. So there is something to be said of day four. We are getting there, so that has been fantastic. Fall sports are up and running. We have field hockey tomorrow after school and informational meeting and kind of introducing the sport of field hockey. We have, for the first time, invited sixth graders also to join us for field hockey to build a program, field hockey and cross-country, two fall sports that are no-cut programs. So we encourage sixth graders to join those. And we have that staffed with some coaches. Soccer, we are still looking for coaches, so if you know of anyone, we really need a boys and girls soccer coach for our middle school programs. But again, we have over 80 student athletes signed up for those programs. The sports are very enriching here. Conversely, we also are going to start our activities in clubs very soon, probably in the next two or three weeks. We tend, we build a list. We go to the staff and the faculty and see who wants to provide clubs for the students. And that's something we always share with our families at that open house, so we're excited about that. And then we just continue to reach, teach, and kind of restore some of the expectations that we have for students, but also families. As Keith has mentioned about safety and transportation, we continue to be out there even post-COVID in the parking lots directing traffic. The system, they have really done a nice job. Day four, I give our families about an A, A minus, getting in and out of the parking lots every day. Again, the bus drivers have been very accommodating, but our families and students are very aware of that we take safety very serious and that it's important and they're learning spaces and where to go if it rains and where to go if it's nice out. So it's been a great opening. We're really happy to see all the kids and just walking through the classrooms. Mrs. Carb and I walking through the classrooms over the past four days and just seeing the students engage with other students and work collaboratively and just engage in activities that are just meaningful for them to make connections with their teachers. So we see the excitement, we're starting to hear the excitement in the hallways. So again, it was a really great opening and we're happy to be back.
Well, I'd like to say, I hope, I know you two probably had a great summer with your family and friends and it seems it's wonderful what you're doing, bringing in the extracurricular sports and especially the no-cut in field hockey and in the track, especially opening it to sixth graders because this is their first time going, you know, from an elementary school to middle school setting, and I think it's going to ease a lot of their angst if they have any of it. But like you say, as the days go on, the noise level will increase because they're working together and they're working collaboratively. So thank you for everything that you're doing. I mean, it's amazing to think that this building is 51 years old and it looks really good. So thank you to also the custodians there for taking it, care of it, and thank you very much for your leadership. And also as at K-5, your visibility of being near and seeing the kids and getting to know their names. You have a lot more to learn, but you do a great job on it. But, you know, it's that one-to-one connection that you make that is so important with those students, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much and thank you so much of all the principals for coming tonight. I know you guys have worked all summer long, even though it's off, and all year, and thank you very much. Enjoy your night.
Can I ask a quick question for Keith? Sorry. I noticed all the schools still have the big storage containers.
Some have been removed.
Some have?
Yes. We're trying to reduce as much as possible, but as we're getting back in, we're not, we don't want to re-clutter our classrooms. One of the silver linings of COVID was some decluttering.
Okay.
It did create some storage and we are working through that. And one by one, Bud Richardson and his team, we've been able to reduce, but we still have a couple around.
So are we paying for those? We run them?
We are.
Okay. But the plan is to get them all out of here?
Superintendent Martino, had it his way, it would have been gone four months ago. Yes, we are, we are working closely.
We are getting reimbursed.
We are.
Expensed.
He's a result.
But I do want them gone.
He does want them gone.
They're ugly.
They're not good-looking.
Okay. I thought of that today when I saw them all and thought, hmm, everything should be back in the classroom.
Although the old one that's been at Proctor for a very long time was removed this summer.
Yeah.
That's part of the delight of Principal Serst.
There's still one at Proctor.
There is one, but that's the new one.
Oh, okay.
The old one we got rid of.
I think it leaked or something.
It was very attractive looking. Very attractive looking.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
So the principals, they all joined us tonight, but they are going to do similar to how we did last year. They're going to do a rotating schedule, so they'll come the week and they'll work out their schedule. Enrollment?
Sure. So in your packet is the enrollment report as of 8:30, 2022. So when we ended the academic year in June, we had 1,555 students, K through eight, and we welcomed 1,641 students this August 31st. So we had an increase of 86 students that we welcomed to our district. As a result, we did see some increased class sizes, in particular grade levels. We did add a section of first grade due to the enrollment numbers, as well as a section of fourth grade. And those two positions were not budgeted, so unfunded positions. We worked closely with the finance department and Becky to see where we could find the money to make sure that our class sizes are within our class size policy. So we continue to monitor the budget very closely. We also saw, as Michelle Carb mentioned, a number of students enroll at the middle school level. And we had 15 eighth graders enroll, so new eighth graders compared to what we were expecting. So again, healthy enrollment for this past summer. And I will also mention that it does connect to busing and transportation because of our policy, our class size policy and redistricting policy. It does create a burden in terms of when students are not attending their neighborhood school due to enrollment. It does cause a logistical challenge in terms of transportation. So we have a number of cases where we're looking at transportation routes as a result of redistricting and students not attending their neighborhood schools and seeing if we can try to accommodate those routes and make sure that they're as efficient as possible. But again, it was 86 students that we welcomed and that is up from what we had anticipated. The real estate market is, as I'm sure you all are aware, if you put your house on the market, it does not take long for a buyer to buy. And we're finding that younger families are moving in with school-aged children, which is exciting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Joe. Okay, thank you, Kelly. How many these students do we have that are redistricting and do not go in neighborhood schools?
We are working on getting that number. Linda McGrath actually is calculating that number for us, so I will have that in the October report.
Okay. My second question is, we always have the long-term projections by NESTDE, and how is this, it seems with this increase of students, 86, are we exceeding what NESTDE had predicted?
I think we are, we are, I think 20, 25 students above NESTDE's projection, so we are above. But it's interesting with our kindergarten enrollment, that is consistent with what NESTDE had projected. It's really the other grade levels that we saw increase enrollment, first through eighth, which is interesting.
That is. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question about space? I rarely only know Peaslee, but, you know, looking at how many grades are pretty much capped right now and at every school, looking in the future, if this trends that way, like Peaslee is busting at the seams. There is not, there is not any room left in there. So talking about if we ever get to a point where we need to add classrooms, are there schools that have space?
So we do have spaces that we could use as classroom space, not ideal. You know, we would have to start thinking about, you know, our unicarp, you know, music in classrooms, not the type of programming we want to provide our students, but that is our next option. We also have a couple schools with a classroom or two that we could add sections if needed. But again, if this trend continues, we will be tight in terms of space.
Yeah, okay.
Lauren, did you have something? If I could just say this, Joe. I see some at Lincoln, you know, they're, I mean, right on, you know, the grade cap level for kindergarten, for example, looking at their kindergarten. Is there, are we, I know for the, I know there's sometimes is movement through the year. What number would, how many more kindergartens can move into our district without not having to add another classroom for any of the grades? I mean, it looks like first grade is capped almost three of the four schools. Third grade is now too.
Yeah, so we have.
Are we thinking that we could potentially need another teacher at some point this year?
I think it'd be unlikely that we would need to add another section, but we are monitoring enrollment closely. Typically by, you know, I think September, we have a good sense of what our enrollment numbers are. We do have some space, not a lot, in kindergarten. And if we need to, of course, seeing a trend where all of a sudden we have an influx of kindergarten students, we would bring that back to the committee and have a conversation around what are the next steps in terms of making sure that we are within our class size policy. It does become really challenging once your classes are established to add a section because what we typically find is that parents and kids love their teachers and redistricting classes and reorganizing classes is really hard. So it'd be a conversation around, do we add another section? Do we add more support, you know, ESP or other support to classrooms? I think it just speaks to the challenge that we have, that when we are in the budgeting process and we're looking at enrollment, we have to speak to the enrollment that we see on the paper, not projected enrollment. You know, and I think it's a budget conversation around, you know, the budget goals, what does the committee want to look at in terms of class size for next year and really make commitment to maybe smaller class sizes as we enter into the budget season.
Speaking of budget.
Yes.
You want to go to?
Sure. So I just want to compliment Rebecca Pellegrino and the finance team. They never get a break, so they are either exiting financial years or entering fiscal years. They do a tremendous amount of work. It's not only do they have the Northborough pre-K through eight budget to attend to, but they also have Southborough's and the regions, and they do it masterfully. And this year, we also had some transitions in our finance department, which made it even more hectic. But with that said, they did an excellent job. I will turn it over to Becky to give an update on fiscal year '22 and closing that out.
Thank you. It's exciting to close out a fiscal year, and this year was definitely an interesting one, to say the least. But as you can see in your packet, we did close the year with zero money on the bottom line. We provided you with two types of reports, depending on how you, reports depending on how you like to look at them. The first one is a report where it does show what the actual either over-budget, under-budget, or on-target number would be. And then the second report would show you if we were to adjust our budget line item, what that budget would look like in that, any particular line item. But the end result is the same where we did end the fiscal year with no money remaining on the bottom line. And as Greg said, this year was definitely an interesting year. In the, for the finance team, we did have some staff turnover at the end of the fiscal year. And so I really do want to just compliment the team. Everyone pulled together and worked very collaboratively so that we could get the work done over the summer. I did want to mention that Elena Daco, who was the Northborough Financial Coordinator, has now moved into the Regional Financial Coordinator role, and we have brought Pam Roberts onboard as the Northborough Financial Coordinator. And so we are forming a new team and we've also just added our latest addition to in Southborough. So it's a new team, but everybody is working together great, and I just can't compliment them really for all the work that they did this summer.
Thank you. So we have a budget. Do we have a motion?
One question, just in the motion, do I have to put until audited or is it done?
Until audited.
I move that we accept until audited the Northborough Public School District final FY 2022 end-of-year general fund expenditure report with adjustments dated June 30th, 2022.
I heard Lauren. I heard Lauren for a second. Thank you. Motion and seconded. Any discussion?
I do have a question. Remember towards the springtime, we had a freeze on the budget due to some transportation costs for district placements?
Yes.
How did that end up playing out towards the end of the year? Were there any substantial either programming or supplies that just were not able to be fulfilled based on that freeze?
We worked with the principals and with the directors if there were things that were needed. And as we got closer to the end of the year, we were realizing there may have been things that had been encumbered through a purchase order that maybe, you know, the school didn't need any longer, had gone in a different direction. So it was able to free up a little bit of funds so that we could make those purchases. At the end of the day, really, we, I think, ended up with very little on the bottom line where we were able to prepay for some transportation, for some, for special education for this year. So at the end, everything, everything came together nicely. Thank you.
So there's been a motion and a second. All of the paper? And the justice. Thank you. Mr. Martino.
Sure. So in your packet is a letter from the Executive Office of Health and Human Services. And I just want to take a minute and communicate some collection and work that is done by the Student Support Services Department, and that is collecting information around Medicaid reimbursements. Marie Allen and her team, and I believe the speech and language pathologists, collect data around families and Medicaid reimbursements. And as a result of that hard work and effort, we received, or the town of Northborough received $53,546.32 back to the town, and that goes to the town, not the school department. And I just want to acknowledge the work that goes behind all of the collection and effort.
So to point and clarify, so we do all the work to get the money back and then the money goes to the town?
Correct.
And, okay.
And that is, that is not atypical. That is typically what happens in communities. Usually those Medicaid funds go back to the community and the town. And again, we have a wonderful partnership with the town offices and John Kader. The power washing, for example, was actually funded through ARPA money, and it was a partnership through the town. I think Mary Allen spoke about a grant partnership and the collaboration. So one could look at it and say, why doesn't the school get that money? But it's just an example of the partnership that we have. But I also just wanted to also acknowledge that there's work behind collecting that data and submitting those forms. And it's just another task the Student Support Services Department takes on.
Do you know what the funds are allocated for at the town level?
They go to their general fund.
Goes to the general fund.
Then how often would something like this occur?
Usually quarterly. So usually we collect the data, submit it quarterly, and then I think the reimbursement happens once.
We receive quarterly payments. This one was one of the larger, actually, past year or so, we've really seen an increase in the reimbursements. I think we've received well over 100. I think we've received well over $100,000 this year 22.
Are there towns that don't operate, like operate schools and towns? Do you know?
I mean, I think that every.
Every community.
Every community functions in a partnership. I know that I've worked in communities where the towns charge back for every single task, garbage collection, plowing. We have a very collaborative partnership with our community in our town. And we're very fortunate. So I think you could, you could look at a town and they have a variety of agreements around how funds are exchanged. The communities that I've worked in, this is typically what happens with the funding.
It sounds similar to how, I think, was it School of Choice or things? You know, when you have an outer, you know, like when you have a person come in, you get one, you have a person go out, the other town gets it, things like that. Any other discussion about? The monthly general fund expenditure report. Did we do that already? I feel like we jumped.
Oh, we did 22. So this is FY 23.
Okay.
Not to be confused with the.
Good example of Becky's world.
And we motioned, right, one, right?
So this report is reflective as of August 31, 2022. We are still in the process of working through compiling this budget. One thing that y'all notice is we do have just under $2.4 million remaining on the bottom line compared to last year where we had about $560,000 on the bottom line. And the reason being is that we've been working with Student Support Services so that the purchase orders for some of the special education, like the out-of-district tuitions and those type of things can be input into the budget. And I know that Marie and her team has been working on that over the past few days. So I really think that when I report the next budget in October, that it's going to be a better reflection of where we are, especially in terms of those larger expenditures.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept until audited the monthly general fund expenditure report as of August 31, 2022 for the FY 2023 budget for the Northborough Public School District.
Motion by Joan.
Second.
Second by Erin. Any discussion? Thank you for your hard work and starting off the season. All on paper? Do you need any?
It's just beginning.
Yay, MSBA update.
Yes, so as the committee is aware, we did submit a statement of interest for the Proctor School Roof and MSBA's accelerated repair project. We did reach out to MSBA and they did indicate that their board would be deciding whether to invite the community of Northborough into the Statement of Interest Eligibility Phase at its October board meeting. I've also been in conversations with Town Administrator John Kader around what if, what if we do not get invited in? What are our options in terms of replacing the Proctor School Roof? We are also in the process of creating statements of interest for other capital projects, specifically roofs at Z and Pelican. And we're also in the process of drafting a statement of interest for MSBA's core building program for Peaslee School. So that is work that is underway. And although we do not have the exact windows when eligibility period will open, we are preparing and we should be in good shape. So we should have more information at the October meeting.
Do we know when in October they meet?
Middle?
Middle? So we might not know about that until the November meeting.
You may not get that till November meeting, I believe. To be safe.
Any questions about that? I know the Board of Selectmen are going to be meeting, I think their next meeting, talking about the ARPA funding and things like that. We were asked if there's anything about the roof and things like that going forward. So it seems like John is aware of what our needs are. He's going to relate that to them.
And then I'll just add, under Keith's leadership and working with Bud Richardson, we are also updating the capital plan and making sure we have a comprehensive capital plan that will drive our budget process. Keith is making sure that we have all possible projects listed on our capital maintenance plan and project plan so that we do not inadvertently leave the project behind. Keith, I'm not sure if there's anything you wanted to add to that.
Absolutely. It's a collaboration. It's forecasting as best we can. Certainly, things do pop up. But, you know, trying to be as proactive as possible and to get it outlined. So you see it, the community sees it, so we can avoid any surprises. So that's work we're into and looking at some of the larger systems and what they need and the upgrades that are, you know, going to be coming down the road.
I guess I'll just say, like, it's great to hear that there's more proactive engagement with the capital projects. I guess I think the community in general is going to be really excited to see that list and to see, to see the kind of time associated with anticipated start and completion of any of those projects. And obviously, the awareness that, like, things come up and capital needs to be allocated elsewhere is understood. But I think for the community to see that will be great. So I'll be, it'll be exciting to have that come out. Thank you for doing that.
Next on the agenda is the budget goals. And we spoke a little bit about it, I think, at the May meeting, just about how it's been a couple of years, we've been focused on COVID, and we haven't really delved back into it. We revamped it a few years back, I think it was two years back, right before COVID. We were revamping it. So I know it, we don't approve it usually until November, let me say. But if we can definitely read over it and maybe make our wish lists and ideas and discuss it is what I envision. Mr. President, do you have any comments about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think last year too, we had a, we did schedule another school committee meeting, which was more like a working session. We focused just on the budget goals. I found that very productive. And if it's the will of the committee, it'd be happy to work with Cheryl on trying to find the time to schedule that. And that type of meeting, we also could do virtually to accommodate schedules and make it a little bit easier to attend.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think we did that too. I don't think we did it last, but I think it was.
Three years ago.
I think it was a few years ago was when we did it. I hear, like, last year was just, although it may have been, I'd be timing it right. It all blends together. But I think that's a great idea too.
So I do have sort of three areas I would like to focus on. I do agree, I think that we need to sort of revisit these. I like that they're aligned with our strategic plan. But I do think there's, there's so much on our budget goals, it just lacks focus. So I'd really like to see some focus in our budget goals. I think priority, I would really like to see a budget goal specific towards mental health. I know that we have it worded in one of our budget goals here about, I think, social and emotional health. But I'd really like to have that focus on mental health. Whether that's prioritizing students' mental health and well-being or prioritizing, you know, personnel for our students and for our staff. I do think that, Mr. Martin, what you were talking about with class sizes, that's been coming up a lot as we talk about, you know, our schools and having to redistrict a lot of our students and then talking about the possibility of changing our school models. So I do think that adding something about classroom size to make sure that our learners experience in the classroom is what I think every parent and family in town imagines it to be. And then lastly, no surprise here, definitely music. This is the year. And Rhonda, we were on the study group together. This is the year. Like, I want orchestra in Northborough. And I really, that word, you know, feasibility in the budget goals, I just want to slash that out. I think that our students need orchestra.
I think it's been put off for a few years. We've done focus.
Yes, so this is the year. I feel it. I know that our study group, you know, we did such great work with Rhonda's leadership on the K-12 study group. And, you know, it was in the middle of the pandemic that we started this study group. And then it sort of just, we've been sitting and waiting, and I think it's time. So those are my sort of three buckets that I would like to prioritize. So I just want to sort of put that on there.
I guess along with the ones that you've mentioned, because we did have orchestra at one time, you know, it gorged down to the elementary school, so I support that also. But I think after hearing tonight, three comments, especially from Erin, who said Peaslee doesn't have any more space, hearing that Peaslee is going to be having a 60-year celebration, hearing that the middle school is 50 years, and seeing that in the budget goals from last year, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, we talk about maintain the district's capital assets, I think we really need to look at the infrastructure that we have. I mean, if we had a home that was 60 years old, we'd be looking to do a lot of updates. And if we want to keep the kids in neighborhood schools, whatever we're going to be doing for sister schools, I think we have to see that education has been changing. And if we don't have any place to put kids in Peaslee, they have taken locker rooms and converted them into technology and a library and all that. I would really like to hone in on the infrastructure of our, of our assets, of what we have and work with the town and work with the Board of Selectmen. And I hope you hear all of us tonight. So I'm sure you're going to be taking back to your board members. So Mitch Cohen, thank you so much for being here tonight.
So we will have that definitely on our October meeting. And then we probably meet, I think, maybe between now and the October meeting?
Yeah, let me look at the calendar with Cheryl.
If we can't do it, then it would be early. So then if we can't, if we can't meet before then, then we'll discuss this definitely more at the November meeting.
So we begin our budget process internally shortly. So I think just.
Day five.
Although we don't need the exact budget goals, just this conversation helps us, gives us some direction around the committee's priorities.
Next is the budget calendar. I don't know if there's any updates.
No, so I'll just add that Becky and her team will be communicating to our leadership team, the budget process and getting documents out. And principals will begin their work. It always begins by talking about what we want to accomplish in the budget process. It's not really about the money, but really the goals that we're trying to achieve for our strategic plan. And principals do an amazing job at making sure that our decisions are student-centered and the funds that we're expending really go to making an impact on what students experience. So that work will be moving forward shortly. And Cheryl will be keeping an update on this document as we move through the budget process.
School committee member reports. I know we are early in the year, so I'm not sure if anybody's really, has anything started. Do you want us, we'll start at the end and then we'll just work down. Anything, right, nothing yet?
No, excited to start a full school year as a new committee member. So yeah, that's it. Thanks.
I have two from the NEF, that's in Northborough Education Foundation. Part of the Apple Fest celebration that the schools will be partaking with the town is that there's an, the NEF is doing an Apple Fest gala. And that's going to be on September 16, Friday night, at Jennifer Hill Golf Course. That begins at 7:30. And I know that they're looking for some members who are NEF who would like to volunteer and help with setup or takedown or sign people in. So anybody can look onto the Friday letter that comes from the superintendent. There is a link to the NEF Foundation. And they can look at that and get the board president's email if they would like to sign up to help out for that day. The other thing I'd like to mention is that if anybody is available on Tuesday, September 13, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Northborough Free Library, NEF is going to be awarding $35,000 in grants this year. All the recipients have been notified. And they will be recognized at that awards reception on Tuesday, September 13, from 4:00 to 5:00 at the Northborough Free Library. And I know that you've heard from my reports even last year that in the spring, they could, any educator could just submit something for an attend for a grant. And all summer long, they've been working with getting those grants rewarded. So as we heard, you know, everything helps from the donations that we receive and also from the $35,000 from the NEF that is going to be going to our educators. So thank you to all the educators who completed the grants and for the people that have supported NEF from all their fundraising activities.
A couple of weeks ago, the Joint Policies Subcommittee did meet. And this year, we're focusing on health and safety of students. So policies that sort of fall under that scope. So as we mostly go through our combined meetings, we'll see those policies pop up this year.
So I don't, I haven't been to any meetings or anything yet this year. But one of the subcommittees I am liaison to, not subcommittees, is NEF. And I've, they've experienced a huge loss this year, this summer. Kim Tollender was a huge member of their committee. She was also a member of the Southborough School Committee. And she was a friend to many. And she was an inspiration to all. And her, her big thing was, we can do better. And she had such a tactful way of saying it and a humble way of saying it and a heartfelt way of saying it. So I know they're probably going to be looking for more members and an impossible way to fill her shoes. But so I'm sure they're going to be looking for that. And then also just to express to Max and that, for Max, for their, you know, condolences from all of us as the school committee members and the whole community for Kim. And I think that I'm going to take her words and say, I think as a district, we do great things, but we can always do better. And I think this year, we should do better in Kim's honor. And I think it would be a great thing to do.
Last time.
So without any other reports, we can move on to education and policy. And there's none at this time. And then we have a distribution of reviewed policies, small necessities need policy and pregnant students policy. And are these distribution reviewed? So have these been, was this from the subcommittee meeting you had a few weeks ago?
These, I believe we went over at our June combined meeting, right?
So we don't have to vote on any of that? The personnel items, distribution of personnel reports. Unfortunately, Mr. Richards couldn't be here with us tonight. But do you have?
Yeah, so again, Heather Richards, Nina Wall, Elaine Chisholm, who are the backbone of our Human Resources Department, have done amazing work over the past many months. The hiring and recruiting is like no other that I've experienced in my career. And it's required a lot of extra work, a lot of creative thinking. And our folks have done an amazing job making sure that we have the best people in front of our students every day. We welcomed 21 new hires to our district over the summer. We had six folks transfer. And we had 19 resignations and five retirements. I will say that there was a lot of movement across districts this hiring season. We saw people who've made decisions to move closer to home and shorten their commute for a variety of reasons, to spend more time with their family and spend less money on gas. We've found ourselves having to negotiate with our new hires in terms of their wants and. and wishes. It is a candidate market, it is not an employer market. And Heather, Nina and Elaine have done the work very skillfully. As a result, we have, I believe, three and a half positions left to fill, 2.5 which are ESP positions and I believe a cafeteria cook position. So relatively speaking, we are in a very good place compared to our surrounding communities. Heather will be in attendance at a future meeting to go over all of the other tasks that HR takes on on a daily basis to support our employees. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Wow, that's a lot. A lot of movement and things, but I was excited to hear about the new hires going with the districts.
Yeah, Dr. Reinhorn did lead an induction program for...
Yeah, we were on the day of our retreat.
New teacher orientation. I think Stephanie, you had commented, what an exciting group of people that we have joining our district in terms of wonderful, I don't know if you want to speak to it?
Sure. There is just so much positive energy. We were in the library at El Gunquin with both the new teachers and their mentors from all three districts and took the opportunity to welcome them to the district, get to know them, let them get to know each other and try to give them a light introduction to who we are as a district and some of the things we value. So we spent a little bit of time letting them explore mission, vision and core values, learn a little bit about the Castle framework with Jennifer Lipton O'Connor leading that. ROTA did a little work with the group about the work we've been doing around culturally responsive practices and that whole thread of our work. And then also had the opportunity for the entire NASA team to come share lunch with the group, share fire drill. We all ended up in the parking lot during lunch, that was fantastic.
Popcorn in the...
Yeah, popcorn in a microwave, can empty a building any day. So that was nice for, you know, everyone to meet each other. And then the technology team, Julie Doyle, Ryan O'Leary and some other colleagues from that department worked with everyone to make sure they had their devices, their logins and everything they needed in that area. So, but again, very positive vibe, a lot of talent and expertise coming into the district and being welcomed by some of our experienced educators.
So on our list, we just have the transfers and the resignations, not the new hires. Did we get them out of previous thing or is it not...
It's the next page.
Yeah. Is it backwards?
Yeah, down.
Yeah, right there. Oh, down.
Multi-page.
Got it. Thanks. Communications.
Can I just make a comment about the back to school newsletter? So in your packet is a back to school newsletter, but I think the story behind the document is really our implementation of Parents Square, our unified communication tool. So we are excited about unifying our communication and having a similar tool that's used across all of our elementary, middle schools district-wide and giving parents more flexibility in terms of how they perceive information, whether that's a text, email or daily digest. And so far, I think that the tool, Parents Square, has been really well received by our principals and anecdotal feedback from parents is that parents really appreciate the effort, really having a unified communication system. So as we move forward and the weeks ahead, we'll have more to communicate that in upcoming meetings, but so far, four days in, it's been a great tool. And we will be also using the tool as our emergency notification system. So in this Friday's update, I will be letting the community know that we will be doing a test of our emergency notification system next week and they can expect an email, a text and a phone call from me just to make sure that our system is working the way it is intended to work. But we will also make sure that parents know that it is just an emergency, it's a test of our emergency system, so.
I just, I chuckled because I just think of, remember on the TV, the cables, they used to...
So maybe I can have Keith and Stephanie make...
Can you audio like record that?
We're going to replicate that.
Nice. Can I ask a quick question? We got the Power School notification or Parents Square notification from you today about updating your paperwork and your emergency contact. Is that supposed to replace all the paper?
Correct.
So, because...
We still got, we got, we only got two sheets though this year. I mean...
There's a lot less paper.
Okay.
But it doesn't eliminate some of the requirements, it does require a paper copy and we're trying to bring it all as much to the non-line platform as we can. So that's been the effort for the last two years. We did it for the first time last year and again this, this fall for the next round.
Okay, because I got the paper from the elementary school, but not Malacan.
Oh.
Right. I'm not quite sure.
Okay, but we're doing that essentially.
Yes, and we have to in some spots, there's some things that just require it.
Gotcha, okay.
An ink signature.
Gotcha.
So maybe offline, we could connect and get a sense of what we've received and see how we can improve the process.
Okay, sure.
Okay, the MASC and the Mass Joint Conference. I know I cannot attend it. I'm not sure if anybody, I'm pretty sure everybody I've spoke to is unable to attend this year. Are you planning to attend it?
So I think no one from the region, I believe, is able to attend at this time. I think the only person who can attend is Roger Tallow. If he attends, I will be in attendance. Although it's a great conference and I wouldn't want to miss it, the delegation meeting is not the end all be all. It's the initial start to thinking about what advocacy MASC is moving forward with. So if you can't attend or can't have a presence, it's okay.
I know, and it is, it is an amazing experience. I went my first year, sorry, four years ago, and it was great. I know we attended some virtual the past couple of years ago, but it's just such a tough, that it's midweek, it's a Wednesday to Saturday.
It's not a parent-friendly event.
Or a working, or a working, you know, outside of the district type or in a district anyway. It's not a working friendly thing. It's unfortunate because it really is...
I really liked the online.
I mean, it was a really, it's a great event in general, like, and I love, I thought it was a great thing for networking and all that. So it's sad that we can't attend this year, but...
So we'll keep you updated if anyone else from the region or Southborough plans on attending.
Moving on to Apple Fest.
So September 15th, 16th, 17th and 18th, the return of Apple Fest, which is very exciting. And I just want to highlight that on Sunday, September 18th, we will have the privilege of marching in the parade. So the arrival time is at 1:00 p.m. and we typically gather at Lincoln Street and I have my signup form, so I will make sure we get this in and I don't know if you, as the chair, if you have any special instructions for us?
I say, where would you like?
Thank you.
No, no uniform required. And...
So I will cancel the order of red shirts?
No red shirts, no khaki pants required.
We look like we were out of a Target.
Hi, ma'am. Yeah, so I'm not sure if anyone's, if you have to march with your kids' school and that. I think it'd be great if we could do it. I know I'm planning on doing it. I'll be with the school committee. I won't. I know maybe we can see if the proctor can walk near us.
We'll need some candy tossers.
Candy tossers, yes.
Throw candy, yeah.
You gotta throw candy up. Is that something that you guys will handle wiring or do we require?
No, they usually, it's usually given to the school. We'll take care of that.
Okay. I know for, I know for the schools, the PTOs get it for them, so that's why I was just curious if...
We should be good.
Okay, sounds good. If anybody has any conflicts or whatever, just...
I'll be there, I can jump between.
Jump between the two, I know. We do need to have a banner holder, I would love to have kids do it. I, I need...
Do you know any kids?
I know a couple. I just need to work out, it's also my niece's birthday, so we've got to figure out if my husband's going to be bringing them to the birthday party or if, we're going, we don't need to have that. Anyways, my dilemmas. So that's the parade. I know we talked about other parts of Apple Fest and being part of it, and then my other question to you was about the fireworks. How did that work out because of the drought situation? Is the last couple of days a rain?
We are working with the Apple Fest Committee on making sure we have the proper insurance. I think Becky is finalizing that and Cheryl, Nancy Buss and I did sit down this morning and go over a signup form for Apple Fest and we reached out to make sure we had appropriate tables and access. So a communication should be going out tomorrow to sign up.
Okay, great. And so that would be on Saturday at the street fair?
So it actually will be at the fireworks.
We're going to have it at the fireworks.
We thought that we'd get more visibility at the fireworks.
That's a great idea. Yes, I would just like to add something because when the school committee first went into the Apple Fest, I think it was the second or third year that we started, and I would just like to say the history behind the banner. And the banner was donated complimentary from John Fouracre from Unisign, business that he had. And it's interesting to see that it gets folded up every year and it's working every year and it's a lot of tradition, a lot of, a lot of great school committee members have marched behind that and have served this community so well, so.
What we should do is start a tradition where every school committee member signs the banner.
Oh, that would be fun.
Oh, that would be, yeah.
It'd be really fun to see how it evolves.
That's good.
Maybe if there's any previous, previous school committee members that are there...
Retired school committee members.
Yes, they can come out on that day and sign up for us. Keith, if you're watching, I'll be calling you later. All right, so that's Apple Fest. All right, action on minutes, I think we're moving on to. We have two minutes. One is an open meeting and one is a special meeting. I'm going to take them separately, I'm going to go it on there separately, just since there are different types of meetings, I think, if we'll take it that way.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the open meeting of June the 1st, 2022 for the Northborough K-8 School Committee. Becky?
So motion by Joan, second by Lauren. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous and with the exception of Bryce who was left meeting earlier due to a family issue. And then the next, action on the minutes.
I'll move to approve the special open meeting minutes of June 13th, 2022. Second.
Lauren and second by Joan, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. All right, future agenda items. We have several listed here. There are things that we talked about, committee members have suggested ideas from previous meetings. We've got the grade configuration study group, bringing that back. We've talked about with that, opening it up to previous members and then also opening it up to new members, I believe, for that. School improvement plans, we're working on that.
Can I just make a comment around the school improvement plan? So I would request that October be school improvement plan presentations for both elementary and the middle school, so they can launch the school year and continue with their, their action plans.
So all, all the schools?
Yeah, so...
Because they're going to, like, kind of like how they did like a joint...
So they're going to have a joint presentation and then, and then Malacan Middle School will present after.
Okay. We're not hosting, are we hosting?
No, not the first meeting.
Definitely, okay, that's going to be later, okay, perfect. I was just making sure it wasn't like one of those combined meetings on the same night. It's like, I'm going to say no on that one, but I think that's right. I think that's more of like, does it work? Okay, yeah, so that's great, so we'll have all of that. So then with that, then if all of them are launching it together, so then there wouldn't be updates, they wouldn't, they used to do them individually, so, and then the PTOs would come with those. So is the idea that we would just do that and then one of the principals will do a summary and then whatever principal does a summary, the PTOs will meet?
Correct, so, so they will share a common rules at the October meeting and then highlights between the schools around work that's been accomplished. And then the meeting that they'll attend and represent their principal colleagues, that is when we'll invite the corresponding PTO to present and they can also share some highlights of what they're putting at their particular schools.
Great, and I would just ask for whenever they decide on which ones to give the PTOs a heads up, because I'm sure they will appreciate that. And I did mention at a meeting that maybe we can kind of give the PTOs kind of a guideline of what we're looking for, because I know they pass on the PTO's chairs, pass on from one to another and they're always like, what do we want, what do you guys want to hear? So maybe if you guys want to send me an email of things that you want to hear about from the schools, then we can then form kind of like a wish list, so then that will give a guideline to the PTOs, so then they can present.
Yes, yes.
I think might be a nice idea. School safety, we want to have an update on what's going on within our schools and the safety procedures.
And hopefully maybe tying that into, you know, what our audience members shared tonight about elections and bringing, you know, the elections possibly out of our schools. I know that doesn't necessarily fall on us, but at least starting that conversation with the town.
Teaching and learning presentations, we'd like to hear about music, science, math, ELA, similar to how in the spring we had a discussion on, what was it?
ELA and SCL.
Yeah, and the SCL, the SCL one, so we want to have more of the presentations on that. So if it's not necessarily, these aren't necessarily all for next month, but for the future items that we'll try to get on as soon as possible. School calendar, again, mentioned it tonight, that kind of goes with the election talk and all that, so we'll be talking about that. And then that's also, I think, a combined conversation.
So it is on the combined agenda for September?
September, great. Students for Services Program, an overdue example of like the castle, not Cassel, but Castle program. Is there anything else anybody wants to add?
Just another update from Jennifer O'Connor about the survey that she did and the work that's going forward with that.
Do you mean the screening?
The screening, sorry, yeah, yeah.
The castle.
Saber.
Saber, the saber screener. Which is aligned to castle.
To castle. I was like, I feel like it was similar though.
You're on, yep, you're right. Yep, you're right. Okay, anything else?
Just something that I think came up today, and that was in our growth of what we did in the special school committee meeting training session that we had, and that was that communication. And Cheryl, I agree, just sent out to all of us that email about signing up, so maybe since it's not on the agenda, maybe talk about it in October and see how we're doing.
Okay, that's great. So are you talking in reference to, you know, being at these events as well as, I know that you had talked about potentially holding coffee hours as well?
Right. I think that was it, and how we could sign, I mean, I think there was something about signing up, and I think it'd be nice if we talked about it in a meeting to let our constituents know what we're planning on doing.
To know them why we're doing it, yeah. So how we are planning on doing a table at the Apple Fest. And so the idea behind that is that the community can have our ears and maybe a notepad of ideas and things that you'd like to hear from us and hear the school committee presentations and topics.
And our November meeting, will all three of those events happen? When is Heritage Day? October?
Yes. So open house, Heritage Day.
Heritage Day is Southborough.
Yes.
Right? Okay, that's what I was saying.
So the Apple Fest and the open houses.
Open houses will be at Bi-actual, I mean, those will both be, so we can...
Talk about how they went.
How they went.
How they went, because I mean, this is...
And what's next?
What's next, yeah. Yeah, so the idea is also at the, the open houses for the schools to have a table for the school committee also.
So that would be four of us?
There's going to be, four of us are going to be needed at the, at four different, yeah. And you, and, and...
That's my own back-to-school.
And that's her own back-to-school night, so...
And what night is that again?
It's September 22nd.
September 22nd.
September 22nd.
I could do the middle school.
And you could do the middle school one for the fifth one. Yeah, so that would be one. So, you know, I would gladly let Bryce take Proctor, for example, since he's got little ones there. And then I can take, Erin, you want to do Peaslee? So then Joan, if you could, I don't know, you can check your schedule, but if you want to do Peaslee or if you want to do Lincoln or Z, and then I'll take the opposite school.
Okay.
And we'll have some too.
Perfect.
All right, so that's all of that and all their ideas. Approval of those and payrolls is done online, and we are up to date. And we're going to keep moving forward with that now that passwords are all understood and emails are up to date. Audience sharing. Please have a seat. Please state your name.
Hi, Mitch Cohen. I live at 12 Whitney Street, and I'm also chair of the Northborough Board of Selectmen. And I am the liaison this year from the Board of Selectmen to the school committee, similar as I think Kelly, you are in the other direction. So I wanted to introduce myself in that role. I think I've met most of you before. I want to congratulate you on what seems like an extremely successful opening to the school year. I can echo that from my own kids' experience as well. I want to say thank you for making the difficult decision to have a professional development day yesterday instead of a school day. I know that's challenging, and I know that was a last-minute decision, but as someone who spends a lot of time outside election areas, it was certainly a lot smoother to not having all the traffic go in and out. And I know there's, has been some discussion already as far as how to deal with that in future years. I would encourage that discussions take place as early as possible if, if the thought is to have the town look for another location. I know that that will be challenging and it will, we'll have to work on that. So the earlier and the stronger that conversation can take place, the better. I do want to, on a personal level, at the beginning of the meeting, there was a brief discussion about school calendars and religious holidays. I was part of that discussion, not having anything to do with the Board of Selectmen, just to be clear, it was before I was serving on the board. That was a very difficult and challenging discussion when that took place a few years ago. I know the vote of the combined school committees was to not bring that up again for an extended period of time, and I hope that remains the case because I fear that given the, the national rise in antisemitism and some of the other things going on in the world, it could be even a more challenging discussion if it, if it comes up again. I appreciate that. And just back to being the liaison, I am open to, if anybody has any questions, anything that I can do as a member and chair of the Board of Selectmen, I'd be delighted to. I know you, Greg, have an excellent, strong relationship with John Kader, the town administrator, and I understand you speak almost every day, which is great, so most things should happen at that level. But if there are policy discussions and things like that, I'm all ears and would love to help out. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you for joining us tonight. All right, it is very crowded audience. Any other, no? No other?
Could I just thank Owen for taking his time for filming this evening for NCAP? So Owen is a senior and should be in bed sleeping right now or doing his homework. I just want to thank Owen. Owen has been tech support for our high school tech team as well, so thank you Owen for all that you've done.
And ESY.
And ESY.
He rocked it. He rocked it. Thank you so much. All right, so without any further discussion, we are going to be adjourning to executive session to discuss the strategies with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee and to discuss the employment of security personnel or devices and strategies with respect thereto with no intent to return to open meeting. So we need to do a roll call, I think, to go into executive session?
Then I'll make the motions. So moved.
What you said. Second, Lauren. Erin?
Yes.
Myself is yes. So we adjourn to executive session at 9:04. Thank you so much.